The regular meeting of the Caukshu Parish Police Jury for Thursday, March 23rd, 2023. If you would, take a moment to silence your cell phones. Also, if you need to speak on any item that's on the agenda tonight, I ask that you fill out one of the blue slips that you'll find there at the front of the room on the table and hand it to anyone at the staff desk. We're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Hayes. Please stand.
Bow your head and follow me, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity again to meet, to discuss things, and hopefully do things that please you. You know, this whole world's getting kind of tough. It's such a blessing to know that we're in the palm of your loving hand, that you forgive us, that you guide us, that you love us, that you died for us. We thank you for all of that. We deserve none of it. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting tonight, guide us, inspire us, hold us close. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Face the flag with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wilford Brimley is green with envy.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
That was beautiful.
What's that?
Wilford Brimley is green with envy. That was beautiful.
He's been dead for 30 years.
Yeah.
He's green.
In case you haven't noticed, Mr. Barris has a strange sense of humor.
He does.
Roll call, Ms. Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Vice President Bream.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Gillery.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantail.
Here.
Mr. Reshore.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelly was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
You two have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
Item one, presentation of certificates to the Barb High School Bluebells and the Sulfur High School Twisters in recognition of their placement at the 2023 Universal Dance Association's National Dance Team Championship. If we could have Mr. Bream and Mr. Tremonti at the podium. I'll take the picture with you. I will join you momentarily. And Mr. Andrew Pont, of course, and Mr. Barris.
So, thank you so much for allowing these ladies to come tonight. I had the privilege of going in February to watch in Disney World these girls compete. We're blessed to have such great athletes. We have some of the best baseball, football, basketball around in our parish, this little corner of the state, but I didn't realize how good our dancers were. Sulfur, the Twisters here, these are some of our seniors, competed in three different divisions. They did Large Varsity Jazz, came in fourth, fifth in Large Varsity Palm, which was pretty cool dance, you know, didn't know much about it till I saw it, and fourteenth in Large Varsity Game Day, which, from what I understand, they only practiced a few weeks on that, right? And it wasn't like there's only 20 teams. They had about, I don't know, 80, 100 teams from around the country in each of these divisions. So, it's pretty impressive that in our corner of the state, our girls represented us that well, and we're proud of them in Sulfur. I'm sure the parish is proud, and I'd like to thank you all for letting them come and get their proclamation tonight. So, behalf of myself, Mr. Andrew Pont, Mr. Barris, thank you, girls. We're proud of you. And give this to your coaches and to your girlfriends, and tell them, let's do it again next year.
Yes. Thank you.
So, before I recognize and honor y'all's certificate, I want to read some chat on the Bluebells, okay? So, the Barb Bluebells are primarily known as a precision high-kicking dance team. For the past two years, the Bluebells have been top finishers in the high-kick category at the UDA National Championships at ESPN Wide World of Sports in Orlando. This year, the team competed in a second category, jazz. At the state level, the Bluebells won the state jazz championship in their division. They are the only group of Bluebells to have honored, have had that honor thus far. At the national level, the group of Bluebells was the first to advance to finals in the jazz category. This team is coached by Deidre Fitzgerald, who is finishing her 15th year as head coach, and Ginger Broussard, who began working with the Bluebells in 2021. Neither coach is able to be here tonight, scheduling conflicts. And there's four seniors here that I want to recognize and give y'all a certificate. I want to introduce y'all separately. Ms. Emery Wallace, the captain of the Bluebells, she is the daughter of Jennifer and Lance Wallace. I want to present you with this certificate.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
Mm-hmm. Cool. Y'all seem pretty small.
Takes a lot to be there. Isabella Lundey. She says you want to speak. Whitney Brevell. Want to present you with that. These are the four seniors tonight. Jordan Sutton.
Thank you.
Appreciate what y'all do. So, congratulations.
I just want to say that we were so honored that we could go out on the national level and represent Caukshu Parish, and I want to thank all of the police jurors and Mr. Bream for recognizing us for that. Thank you.
To A, approving application for liquor and beer permit. Mr. Crane and his staff recommends that one new application be approved, got a motion by Mr. Reshore, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. To B, adopting ordinance approving the following rezoning application at 4757 Highway 27 South and Ward 4, rezoning from A1 Agriculture to RVP Recreational Vehicle Park to allow an expansion of an existing recreational vehicle park. I have a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Tremonti.
The motion is to approve rezoning with all conditions and to add a sixth condition to require six-foot wooden fence where fencing is depicted on the site plan.
Dog-eared or not dog-eared?
Don't go there.
No, I don't specify.
They can use their best judgment.
You're good with all that, Mr. Tremonti?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any objections?
Never gets old.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on 2B of the rezoning of this piece of property? We don't have any blue slips. I would assume not, but we'll ask anyway. That it?
Yes.
Hearing no objections, motion carries. That's probably the most uncontroversial RV park on the agenda in the last 10 years.
Don't jinx it.
Let's see. 2C, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on May 4, 2023, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. Number one, 1015 San Juan Street in Moss Bluff. Number two, 1916 South Perkins Ferry Road in Moss Bluff.
Motion to approve all bullets.
Number three, 3024 Renee Street in Lake Charles. Number four, 3623 Luke Powers Road in Lake Charles. Number five, 1022 Franklin Road in Lake Charles. Number six, 7812 Elliott Road in Lake Charles. Number seven, 612 Speck Drive in Lake Charles. Number eight, 5402 Powell Lane, Lake Charles. Number nine, 2780 Amber Sky Drive in Lake Charles. Number 10, 6446 Barton Drive in LeBlue Settlement. Number 11, 6468 Barton Drive in LeBlue Settlement. Number 12, 805 Topsy Road in Gillis. Number 13, 3912 Etienne Dagel Road in Sulfur. Number 14, 3894 Gil Drive in Sulfur. Number 15, 233 Cypress Road in Sulfur. Number 16, 1136 Beachcomber Road in Carless. Number 17, 2123 Mack Road in Vinson. Number 18, 4991 J. Jardale Drive in Vinson. Number 19, 3719 East Vernon Street in Sulfur. Number 20, 479 High Hope Road in Sulfur. I had a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Is there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated February 16th, 2023. I have a motion by Mr. Gillery, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, adopt a resolution approving the industrial tax exemption application for Crying Eagle Brewing Company LLC with respect to the construction of its new microbrewery to be located at 911 North Lake Shore Drive. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Mr. Tremonti.
I just have a quick question on, from what I understand, Crying Eagle is now listed as a microbrewery retail, or that's their distinction, from what I get. Where's that become manufacturing? Is that, Ms. Avery?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Eric Avery here.
Mr. Bean.
I just wanted to mention that, Mr. Avery, owner of Crying Eagles here, I didn't know he'd come up, all right? So, that's all I was going to say.
Okay. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Eric Avery, and the address, my home or the business?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. Business address, 1165 East McNeese Street in Lake Charles.
Perfect.
Yes, so, Crying Eagle opened in 2016 with the initial focus of being a large-scale manufacturer of our beer brands, hopefully to be able to sell our brands, Louisiana and beyond. During the pandemic, we had made a very pivotal shift in our business model to become still a, we're a manufacturer by the state and federal level, but we also have a retailer's permit that allows us to sell wines, spirits, et cetera. Very important, from a federal level, we are still allowed to distribute our brands outside of Louisiana. However, Louisiana law prohibits us currently from distributing our brands within the state of Louisiana, okay? In addition, the state of Louisiana requires that if I am to sell our beer brands at any additional location that I create, that I would have to manufacture, from a year ago, 100% of that, the product that we sell there. We were able to get some tax, excuse me, some law changes last year that allows us to now only have to brew 50% of the beer on-site, and the other 50% can be manufactured from our existing location and transferred over. But it is still our hope that we will one day be able to distribute within the confines of Louisiana. We're just not able to now, but we do distribute outside of Louisiana.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes. And then, I'd also like to just bring up on our application that it states, you know, an investment of $2.3 million, five jobs, $140,000 in payroll. What's very important, I'd like you guys to consider, is that that is only for the manufacturing component of the lakefront building. The total investment that we're doing, and this does not include land, site work, civil parking, et cetera, is around 12 million now, and we will have 80 jobs there. The five are only the manufacturers that we're bringing in.
And that's required by the ITEP?
The, this, right?
Five jobs or?
That is part, well, the ITEP is the program for manufacturers, okay? I don't know for certain.
I guess let me rephrase it. The five jobs are required just for the manufacturing?
We don't, well, that's how, I don't believe that's a requirement on how many jobs. It's just that we are a manufacturer that checks the boxes for ITEP. For the lakefront project, my anticipation is that we will be bringing on five new production brewers, cellarm, et cetera, for just the lakefront project.
Okay. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to kind of clarify on that, Mr. Tremonti, and for the rest of the jury, any ITEP applicant will put the investment in dollars, anticipated jobs created, jobs sustained that are already there, et cetera. What will happen, the Louisiana Economic Development Department, every year, will look at these applications, and if in this case, or the others that are on the agenda tonight, they'll say, did you create this many jobs in that period? And if they did, fine. If they didn't, the local entities have the ability to chime in if you want to seek any, like a one-year, you know, maybe you don't get the exemption, but it's, that's, you're right, Mr. Tremonti, these only apply to the manufacturing aspect of the business.
Well, it sounds a lot better, you know, when you throw in the other 80 jobs, or the total of 80, you know?
Correct. And half a million dollars in sales tax revenue, as opposed to what you said, you didn't ask, but I felt that that was important, that I at least bring that up to you, because everybody here is, I'm certain, familiar with what's going on on the lakefront. We understand the value and the importance, and everybody has a sense of ownership to this project, and I'm fully aware of that, and it's a burden I carry every single day. And so, I want you all to know that we do take this project very seriously. We have already started turning dirt. You start to see civil work going in on our project within months, and it's going to be sensational and bring a new level of quality of life to our area that we've never seen before. And I'm really excited about it, and thank you all for considering this.
Thank you for clearing that up. I do appreciate it.
You done?
Good, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gab, you're fine?
I'm good.
You're good. All right. Is there any further discussion? We had a motion, a second, no further discussion. Is there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3C, adopt a resolution approving the industrial tax exemption application for Endurama Ventures Oil Systems LLC with respect to various facility upgrades and modifications located at 4300 Highway 108. I had a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Mr. Burley.
I have a question for the gentleman that's representing Endurama, if he could come to the.
Okay. If you could, sir, state your name and address of your choosing for the record.
Okay. David Hext, site manager of Endurama, 4300 Highway 108, Westlake, Louisiana.
Very good. Mr. Burley.
Have y'all met the stipulations agreed to as far as employment and other things that was in the original one, or how close are you to meeting those?
We have not met yet the stipulation. We were short in, but we have, we're actively hiring. We've onboarded six people since the beginning of the year, and we, our goal is to be at the required number of Louisiana. We have a lot of employees, but some of them we draw from Texas, so we have about 240, about 140 of our own employees and about 100 resident contractors, but to meet the ITEP Louisiana residency, we are hiring additional employees to meet that, and we will meet that by the end of April is our goal. So, we're actively hiring. We've partnered with Sewella, doing some work with them, trying to recruit good talent out of there. We're starting to look at McNeese for engineers, so we're actively working, and we will meet the commitment.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a motion, Mr. Burley? Very good. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
3D, adopt a resolution approving the industrial tax exemption application for LACC LLC US with respect to the addition of a new boiler and a new ethane saturator, both of which tie into the current manufacturing process located at 2200 Bayou Den Pass.
Just for the heck of it, why don't y'all tell us who is LACC LLC US? Because, you know, it's, that's just Greek to me.
Mr. President, that's Lotte Chemical.
There we go. Lotte. Now we know.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Markantail, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3E, adopt a resolution amending the police jury's accounting and grants manual to include a policy and a language access plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Abshire, a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We got a problem. 3F, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the Title VI narrative to the United States Treasury for grant funds authorized under the Restore Act. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Reshore. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3G, adopt a proclamation that April 9 through the 15th, 2023, is a National Telecommunicator Week in Caukshu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4A, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract between the police jury and Providence Engineering and Environmental Group for the Forest Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Markantail, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4B, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract between the police jury and Man Shack Consulting Group for the Mallard Junction Water Treatment Plant Pressure Filter Rehabilitation Project. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Reshore. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4C, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract between the police jury and Man Shack Consulting Group for the Caukshu Parish wastewater lagoon cleaning project. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Markantail. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Are you okay, Mr. Andrew Pont?
Water went down the wrong pipe.
It happens.
Sounds like a droughty drainage issue.
No, maybe this was a sensitive project to you. 4D, adopt a resolution acknowledging that the annual municipal water pollution prevention audit has been conducted for sewage district number 11 of Wards 3 and 8 wastewater treatment plant. Got a motion by Mr. Gillery, second by Mr. Reshore. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4E, adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 22 sewers to establish a pre-treatment policy manual and additional operational rules for sewage district number 11 of Wards 3 and 8. Anyone?
No.
I have a motion by Mr. Bream, a second by Mr. Markantail. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Adopt a proclamation that April 2023 is fair housing month in Caukshu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Gillery, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5B, adopt a resolution certifying that the Section 8 program is categorically excluded from activities listed in 24 CFR 58 dot 35B as a tenant-based rental assistant program. Got a motion by Mr. Markantail, a second by Mr. Gillery. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5C, adopt a resolution approving the multi-jurisdictional agreement as a result of the funds allocated through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Barti, and we have Ms. Nicole Miller here.
Mr. President, please change that item and then ask her to move.
Okay. Did I have a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Miller.
Good evening. I wanted to take an opportunity just to talk about a program very briefly. Y'all had a beautiful flow going there. I don't want to break it up for long. I know many of you in your own jurisdictions are seeing still lots of blue tarps, abandoned buildings. One of the programs that we've been working on in Human Services, we've been collaborating with the Office of Community Development, and they are rolling out the Rental Restoration and Development Program. Next week on the, don't let me get the date wrong, the 29th, at the Molling Street Facility, and then here at the Civic Center, 10 o'clock in the morning at the Molling Street Facility, and then 5:30 in the evening at the Civic Center, Louisiana Housing Corporation will be discussing the program. I wanted to just briefly tell you what that program is about. It's available to small landlords, nonprofits, property owners of any make, type, and sort. You can apply for the restoration or new development of units that you are willing to make available for affordable rental housing for our local residents. You can get up to $750,000 for up to seven units. So, it's a very small program. This isn't for our big guys. This isn't for our big developers, but for those local mom and pops that are looking for a way to redevelop their abandoned homes, you know, that they had previously been leasing out, this is a great opportunity for them to do that. It has some interesting caveats to it, some of them very reasonable. It can't be in a flood hazard area. We don't want to do that again. They have to own the property at the time of application, so this isn't an acquisition program. It is for redeveloping on existing property. The units do have to be vacant. They don't want to deal with relocating folks who were in those units, so the units do have to be vacant. And then, you actually have to finance the reconstruction or development of those units, and then it's a takeout loan on the back end. So, they'll come in with that money on the back end. It's completely forgivable as long as those units are occupied by low-income residents for, depending on the amount of funds, between five and 20 years. So, it does have some weird nuances, but it still is a great opportunity. So it, it does have some weird nuances, but it still is a great opportunity. I just would encourage you to let your constituents know, and if we can help at Human Services, we're certainly happy to do that. We'll be doing the workshops on that 29th date. Um, C-Gov is going to be recording for us on that date, and then we'll continue to make that recording available. We're willing to do technical assistance if there are constituents who are needing that, um, in your jurisdiction, so please reach out and let us know. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions by the jurors for Ms. Miller? Place good. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Move on 6A.
6A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons on the general fund. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, action on bids received for hot mix. Staff recommends the bids of Prairie Contractors LLC and RE Height Construction Company LLC be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6C-
Move on 6C.
Action on bids received for water level monitoring station parts. Staff recommends the bids of Advanced Environmental Monitoring and Blue Water Design Technologies LLC and Kissers North America be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6D, adopt a resolution on bids for the Health Connection Generator and Improvement Projects. Staff recommends the bid of Alfred Palma LLC in the amount of $479,100 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Adopt a resolution on bids for the Highway 397 and James Suddeth Road Waterline Loop and Replacement Project. Staff recommends the bid of Blake D. Heinz, Inc., in the amount of $1,402,403 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Barti. We need a second so we can get it done there. You, 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 well, we, we appreciate you, Mr. Brain.[1415.23][1415.23](LAUGHTER). We'll make sure you get paid this month. So we got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6F, adopt a resolution on bids for the Public Works East and West Side Paving Improvement Projects. Staff recommends the bid of Gunter Construction, Inc., in the amount of $427,000 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6G, action on bids for collection and distribution pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bid of Coburn Supply Company, Ferguson Waterworks, and Lafayette Wind Water Works Company be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6H, action on bids for four 2023 or newer tandem dump trucks. Staff recommends rejecting the non-responsive bid and request permission to re-advertise. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Brain to re-advertise. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6I, action on bids for ready-mixed concrete. Staff recommends the bids of Dunham Price LLC and PAI Ready Mix LLC be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6J, action on bids for crushed stone. Staff recommends the bids of Apex Aggregate Supply LLC, DB Aggregates LLC, and Port Aggregates, Inc. be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Richard, a second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6K, advise for requests for proposals for program management services for the community development block grant disaster recovery funds. Check. Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Abshire, and a second by Mr. Burley. We've got some discussion. Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the actual program management service, that's really a natural consulting firm coming in to, uh, kind of look at these, um, funds, and what exactly is the, uh, disaster recovery funds? What do we actually receive, and what are we looking to get and be distributed throughout the parish?
I was going to say, Ms. Jennifer Kobian's here to answer that.
Just state your name and position with the parish, please.
Hi, uh, Jennifer Kobian, grants director of the, the Division of Engineering and Public Works. Um, so we've received an allocation of $26 million for Laura Delta Ida May Flood. It was kind of a combined allocation. Um, it, it varies in what is eligible under this. There's the Hometown Revitalization Program that is more of your, your economic development type projects. There's also, um, another program that's more, um, along the lines of infrastructure. So there are, you know, pretty strict stipulations on how these funds can be spent, such as, it's got to be spent in low to moderate income areas, or to benefit low to moderate income residents and things like that. So $26 million in that, this is a consultant, this is HUD dollars that come down after a disaster, so they're heavily, um, regulated, lots of compliance, so this consultant would be, uh, there to help us navigate through all the requirements.
Okay. So, um, like, on, like, on the funds itself, will, uh, the actual jurors be consulted on how the money is to be spent in the area?
Yeah, so, um, the, it's, multiple steps go into, into this process, so the first step would be to go to documents like our Long-Term Recovery Plan, our Strategic Plan, um, some, um, other projects that have come along the lines, uh, that we've been working with Nicole and Terrick on, um, and we will develop a list of projects and then come to you guys to, to consult with y'all and, and talk through it, get y'all's, um, get y'all's blessing on it to, to be able to move forward to the next phase, which would be to develop a, um, a proposal to the state, sort of like a pre-application, where we just type up project narratives so that the state can review them. That, we would have to come in front of the police jury to be able to get y'all's approval, so I'm sure we'll have some, some meetings before, before then to be able to, to go over what was developed, um, and again, get you guys to, to okay everything.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, thank you, Ms. Kobian. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7A, advise that adjudicated property will be offered for sale on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. 7B is also advised that the regular meeting of the police jury originally scheduled for April 6, 2023, has been rescheduled and would be held on Tuesday, April 4, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the beautiful parish government building.[1748.41][1748.41](LAUGHTER). 8A, Tammy Cole et al. versus Calcasieu Parish Police Jury et al. And 8B, potential litigation involving coastal erosion is both executive session and items. Got a motion by, who do we have? Got a motion by Mr. Uh, Burley, and got a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn. We are now adjourned.